I'm going to go ahead and call this evening's city council meeting to order. Please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please show that the council is present with the exception of Councilmember Pierce. Moving on then to consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Moves in second, we approve the consent calendar as proposed, all in favor?
Aye.
It was unanimous then. Moving on then to recognitions and presentations. And we do have a presentation and recognition this evening for a departing Trails and Landscape Committee member, Carol Harrington. City of Clayton relies on our volunteers to do a lot of the heavy lifting here. And one of the committees is to turn off the microphone. Thought it would pick that up, okay. And Carol was, busy, busy life, so she was unable to re-up for another term, but she served an excellent term, was a big asset to the committee, so we want to recognize her service with a nice recognition that you can then show in pride that you did serve on our Trails and Landscape Committee. So appreciate very much your service, that's what we do rely on. All right? Thank you. You want to say anything?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you.
It's a really nice keychain, though.
All right, then we'll move into reports. And we do have a report in Planning Commission, Commissioner A.J. Giappino.
Hello, everybody. Happy New Year, for those I haven't seen yet. On Tuesday, January 9th, the Planning Commission met and we voted unanimously to approve and extend the Creekside Terrace mixed-use project for another year. And that's the property right along on Oak Street between Center and High. And that was it.
Whew, it's it, huh?
That's a tough one, huh?
Lot of deliberation on that one. Any questions on that? No questions, okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, A.J.
Okay, next up is Trails and Landscape Committee. Understand that Chairman Howard Kaplan is out of town, so we have a...
I'm here in his stead, I'm Karen Kaplan.
Welcome, Karen.
I'm also on the committee.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate you being here to give the report.
Okay. The report was in the minutes, did you want me to go over the report? I've not done this before, so just highlight what was done.
If you'd like to just summarize the highlights.
Executive summary.
Executive summary, okay. So we met in September and went over expenditures and it was deemed to be appropriate for Trails and Landscape District. We did a lot of discussion in December about what exactly the Trails and Landscape Committee oversight position is. And we talked with among the committee members about how we don't really have a clear picture of what our role is in oversight. And Howard made some notes, which I'd like to read to you.
That's actually on the agenda for discussion later on this evening?
So that's a separate issue?
Yes.
Okay, all right. The other thing that we talked about in December was that Carol and Dane Harrington or Horton would not be returning. We reviewed the Landscape Maintenance District annual report, which is this report here, and it was approved. And, like I said, discussion of the function of the Oversight Committee for further discussion.
Are you going to be able to stay this evening then?
Yes.
I get basically state the reasons that that issue came up?
Correct.
And be able to represent the views and questions that were raised at that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up would be the City Manager Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hayden, members of the council, I have two items. First one, you're already aware of, but I think many of you recall that when the city sold the land that's under the, right now housing the CVS store, it went to a family, the McGuire family, and they're doing business as Endashi and they're developers. One of the things over 10 years ago, I think it's about now 11 years ago, after they acquired the land and developed the property on their own, that family was so in love with Clayton, they do not live in Clayton, but they were so in love with Clayton and the people of Clayton and most significantly, the downtown park, they absolutely adored, that family pledged a $100,000 donation to the Grove Park. And over a period of the last 10 years, those $10,000 annual pledges have come in. You might recall, it was probably a year ago at this time, that they came in and presented their final check and donation and we, as the city, presented them with a nice framed print of the downtown park. Well, in today's mail, I guess that tree continues to bear fruit because it was minus 1-0, but they sent a check of $1,000 just out of the blue, unsolicited, saying they just thoroughly adored their relationship with the city, the city staff, the city council, and the downtown park. And they quote said that it's one of the best things that the family has ever done. So just remembering that and continuing that, our city received a $1,000 donation. That will also go into the Grove Park Fund to be used separately and only for the Grove Park. But I wanted to share that publicly because it's just, you know, really neat when people send those kind of things unexpectedly. And that was the goodness of their heart. The second matter, so let you know officially today, all pre-employment conditions have been satisfied by the candidate that I've selected as the next Chief of Police. And so I sent to the individual the letter of employment, the individual signed the letter of employment, and right now will be informing their boss as to leaving their current employment and coming over to work with the city. I don't have a press release yet, so I don't want to go into details, but we can expect that our new Chief of Police, she will be starting on February 12th. That's it, Mayor.
Good. Two nice items, thank you, Gary, appreciate that. And yes, it is how refreshing to get someone who continues to honor an original commitment and has gone beyond that because of their love of Clayton. So that's a very nice way to show it. All right. Moving on then to city council reports. Let's start on my left with Councilmember Catalano.
So I think the only item from either report, I attended the January 3rd Budget Subcommittee Meeting.
Okay.
Which is also on today's agenda.
All right. Councilmember Shuey?
I had one meeting with Sean Robinson about parking issues that he's been having with the school district. And shocking, the school district is difficult to work with, but I actually am going to need to talk to Gary about it and Julie and kind of see if we can help anything out, just in terms of everything that's going on with parking and reciprocal agreements and stuff. But other than that, it was a great holiday season and looking forward to a great year for the city.
Okay, okay, good. Councilmember Pierce?
It wasn't that quiet since our last meeting. And so I will summarize but not go into depth. I had one Regional Planning Committee of the Association of Bay Area Governments, we had two A-Bag meetings, we had four meetings of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, went to the Mayor's Conference in Pleasant Hill in December, which was the changing-of-the-guard meeting at which many of the previous mayors were stepping down and the new ones were coming on depending on the time of their reorganization, so it was nice to meet some of the new folks. We have had a ton of meetings of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which I'm sure you have been reading about, and I can fill you in on that if you so desire. The Bay Area Council Economic Institute, which is a subset of the Bay Area Council, working more on research and planning. We had a goal-setting session for 2018. We also had a Transpac meeting. And we had the Board of Supervisors Reorganization Luncheon, which both Keith and I attended for our supervisor, Karen Mitchoff, who is now the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. One sad thing, and I would like to ask for recognition of that in this meeting, Valentin Alexoff, who was our City Manager for several years in the late 80s and early 90s, died on December 11th. And I attended his services on December 30th, and I would like to ask that we adjourn in his memory. He made such a difference to this community. If you've read The Pioneer, you don't need me to summarize, but he really helped to shape the Clayton we are today. And so I'd like to request that we adjourn tonight in his memory.
All right, good thought through, good suggestion. Councilmember Diaz?
All I have is I attended the Mayor's Conference and represented the city as my final agu as the Mayor of the city of Clayton, that's it.
All right. Well, as I suspected may happen, I got a little busier once I stepped up to become mayor. I also attended Karen Mitchoff's Holiday Open House on December 13th. Number of representatives from the county and the cities were there, so that was good to continue the network. Attended the Habitat Conservancy meeting on the 18th, and we adopted the legislative platform for next year as well as the budget. And the budget was at 9.7 million. And 6.3 million of that is set aside for land acquisition. So that's the primary function of the Conservancy, to manage and protect that land. I also was selected to be the Chair of that board for this year, 2018.
Congratulations.
Okay. And then on the 19th, went to the Clayton Concord Hospice Tree Lighting there at the John Muir Medical Center in Concord. On the 29th, had the pleasure of representing Clayton at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Jack Simkins and read a very nice proclamation after listening to lots of his fellow scouts recognize what he had done and accomplished. And it is quite an accomplishment to reach that level of Eagle Scout. And we had a proclamation that proclaimed the 29th as Jack Simkins' Day. So he was pretty proud to receive that very nice proclamation that we were able to hand to him. Then with two, I also met on the 3rd of January for the Budget Subcommittee, we'll be hearing more about that tonight. And then with Julie, went to Karen Mitchoff's Board of Supervisors Reorganization Luncheon. And then last Thursday, went to the Mayor's Conference in Pinole, where we had a very interesting presentation on the homeless issue that we're facing here in Contra Costa County. And we heard both about the issues itself and what's being done to try to support the people that find themselves in that position. And it's good to hear that there is some focus on that. And then I took the weekend off.
No dessert.
All right. So that's the reports, let's move on then to public comment.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me?
Shelley Awards?
Oh, excuse me, thank you. I did want to recognize the Clayton Theater Company. They put on the live presentations here in the Clayton area and held a show or put on a play this summer, the Moon Over Buffalo performance. They actually gave a number of different plays, but for that particular performance, they won two Shelley Awards on Saturday, which is an annual affair recognizing excellence in the performing arts being performed in Contra Costa County. And there's a number of small community theaters as well as leisure theater that participate in that competition. And the Clayton Theater Company took honors for Outstanding Actress in a Play with Teresa Grossman and the Outstanding Director of a Play for Latoya Watts for the same play, The Moon Over Buffalo. So I think that's special recognition for live theater here in Clayton, and it certainly displays that we do have a great example. And I want to encourage people to go to those performances. We have one coming up in the spring called Linda Tenner that will be performed again at Endeavor Hall. So I think we have reason to be proud of the local performance down here in the presentation and the theater company that puts those on. Thanks for reminding me. All right, let's move on then to public comment. I have two speaker cards. I'll take first Anne Stanaway. This is for items not on this evening's agenda.
Good evening, councilmembers, Ed Al.
Please identify your name and address, please.
I'm Anne Stanaway from 1553 Haviland Place in Clayton.
Thank you.
Tonight I come in search of your support. Support for the dedicated professionals who daily protect and serve Clayton's families, Clayton's commerce, often in impossible conditions. Clayton is awash in dichotomy. Our website boasts of a bucolic, family-friendly, small-town environment. In fact, danger lurks in the shadows of Clayton's public spaces, increasingly attractive to the criminal element. Moreover, code enforcement, subsumed by political exigencies, undermines the valiant efforts of police, firefighters, and healthcare professionals. Still, Clayton's website continues to boast some grand partnership with business leaders. Actually, the city does little to encourage commercial development. Why would businesses locate proximate to neighborhoods where fire lanes have become community parking lots instead of open access for first responders? Fire lane protocols guarantee our first line of defense against sweeping destruction and loss of life. Our first responders depend upon the city for enforcement of public safety protocols. City Council, do the right thing. Demonstrate a real commitment to public safety. Maintain sure and safe access for emergency responders. Our lives depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have another card for Barbara Whale.
Mayor Hayden and City Council Members, I'm Barbara Whale and I reside at 1543 O'Hara Court in Westwood. Mayor Hayden, in his letter to the residents of Clayton, stated that Clayton remains a comfortable, small-town atmosphere. I completely agree. This is a wonderful place to live. As a retired middle school principal, I have also been impressed with the adoption of Do the Right Thing by the entire town, setting a positive example for our young people. When the local high school was struggling, the entire community, led by Pat Mindendorf, worked to create the highly successful Clayton Valley Charter School. These actions demonstrate that Clayton is a community that cares about the welfare of our children. This is why I'm here, to address a situation that puts our young people at risk. Westwood Community Park is part of a series of trails and parks that connect the Clayton Center to the Clayton Station. The west end of the park leads to a road that runs behind the Safeway store. The road borders a creek that shows evidence of campfires, sleeping bags, backpacks, abandoned shopping carts, graffiti, and other garbage. Both the park and this road are dark at night. Recently, a Westwood resident was beaten and robbed while in the park in the early evening. Many young people use the park and the path as a shortcut to the stores in the Clayton Station. This is not a safe situation for anyone. My request is that the city consider putting solar lights in the park to increase visibility. Improved signage indicating that the park is open from dawn until dusk and other park rules is also necessary. Finally, the city might use its influence to request Safeway to install more lighting at the rear of the store. Due to the assault, Mayor Hayden did alert Westwood residents to use caution when walking at night. However, the park is open and used by all who live nearby, especially our teenagers. As a grandmother to four teenagers living in Clayton, I ask you to give serious consideration to my request and to do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to address the council on non-agenda items? Seeing no one, then we'll move into public hearings. We have none scheduled for tonight, move into action items. So we go to 8A, Presentation and Acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2016-17 Annual Citizens' Oversight Committee Report by the Trails and Landscape Committee for Measure B, Citywide Landscape Maintenance District, and Discussion and Clarification of the TLC's Role as an Oversight Body for the Landscape Maintenance District. Now, Karen Howard had planned on giving that presentation, is that what you'd like to do this evening?
Yes.
Fine.
His report, we've already talked about, you don't need any more of that, right?
Not unless there's something you'd like to add to that.
No, and I already added what we discussed in the December meeting, which was summarized by Laura and that I already presented. So we're just looking for approval of the report.
All right. Had the council had an opportunity to review the report that was included? Any questions about the report? Then, well, we'll take these as separate items then.
Yes.
We'll take whether or not, pardon me?
Any public comment on the annual report?
That's what I meant, though. Separate then to this. We'll call you up then in a moment to discuss the next item then. So this is an action item, is there any public comment on the report for the Trails and Landscape for the last fiscal year? Seeing no public comment, coming forward, we'll close that off, bring it to council. Any questions or concerns? Julie?
Actually, neither. I would just like to give compliments to the committee on the report and to our staff on all that they have accomplished with these dollars over the last several years. There were several references to earlier years as well, and how the money has been managed and how we have maximized the benefit of our pay-as-you-go system as we've talked about it. So I'm very pleased, also pleased that we had some water this year so that we're able to revive some of our ailing landscape. When you're so restricted by the water district, even much further than local residents are, it's very, very hard to keep the landscaping looking good. And I just want to compliment our staff on their hard work in getting that done. Trying to peek over the podium so that Mark can actually see me and know that we appreciate all that hard work. So when the time is appropriate, I'll be happy to move approval of the report.
Any other comments? Well, I'll echo Julie's comments, and we got caught in one of those catch-22s with all the water. We did have quite a bit of landscaping that did require maintenance. So did require some priority setting and a lot of work by the Maintenance District. So thank you again for your efforts. All right, I will entertain that motion. In fact, Julie has made it now that we accept the Trails and Landscape Committee's annual report for fiscal year 2016-17.
Second.
And moved in second, all in favor of accepting that report as submitted?
Aye.
Okay, nobody opposed, so that was unanimous then. Let's move into then the question that was raised at the last meeting, and that's to clarify what the role is of the TLC itself. We do have some new members on the committee, and the question did come up, and I thought it was appropriate that that actually be addressed at the city council level. The city council does appoint the commissioners to sit on the committee, and so we do have a staff report. Laura, did you want to address the responses to clarify from a city's perspective what was intended when this was formed?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I really don't have anything else to elaborate on that's already been presented in the report. Attached to the report is also the resolution, which outlined the responsibilities and the objectives of the TLC when it was formed, and that resolution was approved by the city council. I've also attached a couple of documents where staff has gone and taken a look on other communities and what they have in terms of their oversight advisory committees. And it more succinctly distinguishes in their oversight committees and as their advisory role and what their functions are limited to and what they are allowed to do, which is a little bit different than the way our resolution reads. Our resolution reads what you can do, not so much what you can't do. And obviously, both Maraga and Pleasant Hill have language in theirs that clarify also what the body is not to get into in terms of detail. And that's something that if the council feels is appropriate or something, a direction that you want to go into, we can always update the resolution that we currently have in place. But I'll let the TLC Chair standing in, Karen, present their comments about what they had in terms of concerns about the TLC's roles and responsibilities and what they thought their issues should be that they could address.
Well, and you were there at the meeting and representing the city, and the attachments that you did include in the report seem to address the level of oversight question that came up.
Correct, yes.
All right.
And I'm just available for any questions you may have at the end.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, did you have an opportunity to review the staff report that was prepared to address that issue? Do you have any comments on that?
Come to the mic.
Come to the mic then, please.
One thing was, it seemed that there was a misinterpretation of what we had said about seeing the scope of work for projects. We are not asking to have a say in what the scope of work is. We just want to see what the scope of work is in a project so that we know whether or not to give a yea or nay when asked if we think the plan for the spending of the Trails and Landscape money is appropriate. And it didn't seem quite like we were comparing apples and oranges when comparing our process with that of Pleasant Hill and Maraga, since they are much larger communities with much more commerce and other issues to address than Clayton has. So it didn't seem that that was really prudent to what our discussion had been. So those were the primary concerns, was that there had been a misunderstanding about what we were trying to address as our position in the Oversight Committee. And then I have comments from Howard, if you'd like me to read them.
Certainly.
The Clayton Landscape Maintenance District Supporting Measure H Approved by Voters Collects Taxes to Provide for Maintenance of Landscaped Road, Medians, Trails, and Open Space. The measure stipulates oversight by a citizen committee known as the Trails and Landscape Committee. Upon review of the language in the measure and past resolutions of city council, there is not a clear meaning regarding the extent of oversight necessary to fulfill the intent of the voters or the city council. The dictionary definition of oversight is supervision or watchful care. A narrow interpretation of oversight is that TLC is to opine on whether the funds are being used solely for LMD purposes. A broader interpretation would include TLC participation in defining a project's scope of work by working with staff to help prioritize allocations of limited funds and supporting staff on use of funds in a way that maximizes utility and enjoyment by the citizens of Clayton. The narrow definition seems to be only an audit function, while the broader definition seems to capture a real role in the funds allocation process intended by a citizens' Oversight Committee. The real question here is what did voters expect when voting for the measure? What were citizens expecting in oversight? The committee is asking city council to clarify this understanding of what voters intended and expect from the TLC oversight.
All right. Well, I think the staff report intended to answer that question by citing examples of how jurisdictions in the neighboring communities deal with this issue, and also how the city council, when we approve a project, we look at the prioritization of funding that's available and approve those that we feel are appropriate for the betterment of Clayton. But once it's approved, we don't manage the actual construction or monitor the performance of that project, we rely on our staff to do that. So that seemed to be one of the issues that TLC was dealing with. They felt that just providing approval of the project didn't meet the understanding of the extent of management that was to be provided. And it's my understanding that the original intent, based on the staff report and what we've observed in other communities, was more in tracking with the way the city council approves and then relies on staff to actually manage projects within the city. And I believe that was the way that the TLC was set up, relying on the oversight of a citizens' group to confirm... citizens' group to confirm that the funding for projects using the money allocated to TLC is properly being used on items that should fit within that responsibility and setting those priorities. But beyond that, it's my understanding that it was not the intent of the council or the initial resolution to ensure that the TLC committee would continue to monitor the actual performance of those projects once approved.
Right. And I don't think progression of the project, once it's approved, was ever a question for us.
Okay.
But I do think that there was a lack of understanding among the committee members that when a project was brought to the committee and said, "This is what we're going to do," and then it went back to the City Council, that automatically meant that it had been approved. And there was a gap in understanding about having actually given approval on the committee level for the project to proceed. And the primary project in question is the planter boxes, because it went from a very small project of repairing the planter boxes at $35,000 to now adding water and lights and making bigger boxes to the tune of $270,000. And our concern is that while that sounds beautiful and wonderful, if we do that project, are we still going to have funds left over to maintain those projects? Or is it better to back off on the size of the project so that we can maintain them? Because some of the planter boxes have the appropriate trees in them so that they are not broken because of roots, but they're broken because of a lack of maintenance. So there's that balance there of making a decision about what project is the most appropriate for the funds that we have. And so that was our concern.
Okay. Well, I ask for input now from particularly Julie and David, who I believe were on the council when the TLC was formed, and you might be able to provide some more background into the original intent of the council.
Sure, I'll take stab at that. You make it sound so old. Let me see if I can remember back that far.
I'll be next.
Well, it has been in place now for about 20 years, and our original intent was when asking the public to approve these Landscape Maintenance Dollars, that there would be, as has been referred to by everyone, oversight of the dollars to make sure that they are being spent as directed by the council. We also asked for the TLC to help us to look at the things that were needed to be done within the community and to help us prioritize those global kinds of projects. I don't think it was ever our intent that the committee would get into design. The council doesn't get into design specifically, perhaps on a slightly aesthetic basis, but certainly not into the specs and the engineering and that kind of thing. As far as principles of things for the planter boxes, I think we all said, you know what, we should have put water in them to begin with. We should have made sure that they were appropriately sized for the trees that, and staff knows I have complained over the years many times. In fact, I think, Karen, you've heard me complain about some of the plants that were put in them wound up getting a little too ambitious, and you can't see to get out of a side driveway or something like that. So there was definitely need for some redesign and redoing them, but it was never our intent that the TLC would get involved with bid packages and approving any of those kinds of things. We don't even do that at the Transportation Authority for that matter. We say, yes, go out to bid. You guys put the specs together and all of that, and you're responsible for making sure it comes in on budget. And then, you know, that, I don't feel like I'm explaining this very well, but the intent was that the committee was to oversee how the dollars were spent and to make sure that they went where we said they were going to do, and they weren't being spent on something that didn't qualify for the purpose that they were collecting. So it wasn't particularly to get into the nuts and bolts of whether the project was actually something we had to do. It was to prioritize from among the list, and staff does a great job of telling us the projects that they think are necessary, that we can afford, and what the scope ought to be. We generally approve that as a wish list, and as we get the dollars, we've been able to implement some of those. And some projects have taken longer than others to get paid for, just because we agreed on a pay-as-you-go. So David, can you help me out and make it more clear? Because I don't feel like I'm making myself clear.
I would say that that's a pretty good recitation of my memory of what we did and the reason, although I think your point was that they're not getting involved. I looked at them, and I think we intended them to be stewards. The intent was that, at the time, we wanted to make people assured that citizens would be looking at this, that we are going to put this forward, and it's going to be a separate entity, and it's going to be done properly, and it's not going to be subject to political whim of, oh, we're going to try and raid Peter to pay Paul and do things like that. There was a small, I won't, cobble is the wrong word, but there was a small group of people that were worried that there was a potential for misuse and misappropriation, things like that. So we wanted to make sure that the Oversight Committee, the Trails and Landscape Committee, would be the stewards for that. I guess I would say, I looked at, and my memory is that they were, yeah, not the nuts and bolts of sending it out to bid, but whether or not it was a good idea, and they agreed with staff that we should replace the planters and we should replace them bigger. My vision or my memory is that, yeah, we want your recommendation as to whether that's a good use of the funds that are there. But yeah, as to the specifications and everything, if individuals, I mean, you know, we've got three attorneys on the council. Sometimes we get into more than staff wants us to on the nuts and bolts. But in my memory, it was exactly to steward and say, you know what, we have this amount of money every year. We want to prioritize it this way. Staff has recommended. You're not rubber-stamping staff. We have the right as the council to accept staff over the TLC committee and accept their recommendation. But the point was that you guys were going to be our eyes and ears and really get into more in depth than anybody in the council could regarding, well, is this a good tree? Is that a bad tree? I noticed we've got, you know, the North Valley Park on the agenda later, and certainly 20 years of history has now shown that I don't think the trees we put in there were maybe the right trees at the time, because they didn't grow like the downtown park has grown to provide the shade that we wanted. And I'll get to my personal, you know, thoughts on that, because I was involved in it. But so from my standpoint, you guys are the stewards, and you are to give recommendations to us that we think this is a good idea, we think this is a bad idea, and then staff will take that and run with it. And as Julie said, you're not getting into, you know, the bids and all of that. That's staff doing it. Does that hopefully clarify it more from my standpoint?
Can I, I don't have all the insiders to the origins of the TLC, but maybe by just analogy. I mean, often we look at planning commissions who look at projects at the very high detail in terms of they specify certain types of paint colors and different features of buildings, and they get into all those details and the conditions of approval. But once they approve a project, the planning commission will never get into the details in terms of what do the construction documents actually look like? Are they accurate? Because the conditions of approval and the direction they gave at the commission decision is supposed to really detail that level so that the professional staff that we have can then, you know, do their job when they review the actual plans. But that sort of came to my mind. But like I said, I don't have the history on the TLC, but.
Okay.
No, I'm looking, but I did have a small tour of duty as the liaison to the TLC, and what both Julie and Dave have said here reflects what I think the intent of what the body is to do.
We never envisioned a tour of duty. It's supposed to be a little more collegial.
Oh, excuse me. Gary?
Yes.
We'd like input also from your perspective.
Yeah, from my, I've been here since that ballot measure was crafted. I'm probably the author of that language. And as most of you realize and understand, that when there's ambiguity in language, you often go back to intent, and many people on state legislation will go back to the author of the language and what does the author, you know, see. So let me give you an example of what I saw that actually the TLC participated in. Early on in its formation, there was the influx of monies that came into the district. And the TLC met with staff, and one of the first questions was, do you want to start on landscaping, or do you want to start on trails? And I think the City Council remember that the TLC thought about it, talked about it, and said, you know what, everyone, almost everyone in town uses the trails. Not everyone, you know, sees the landscaping improvements that might be put in. Let's concentrate on trails. And so you recall, that came to the City Council. The City Council said, yes, we like that idea. And so then for several years thereafter, the trails throughout the city that are used by our residents and citizens, that was the first and foremost use. And the trails have been brought up. Those are the asphalt trails that are within the city. Similarly, when it gets to the landscaping now, it's kind of like, in my mind, the TLC says, you know, given the finite resources of money into the district, we would prefer to, that the city concentrate on the use of those monies to improve the medians, or to do planter boxes, or to start doing entryways to subdivisions. That's kind of the level of priority that we are seeking from the staff standpoint as to where to utilize the monies that are in the district for improvements. I would also just caution and note, because I think there was a mention that the planter boxes initially were cost $27,000, and now they're $270,000. Just for everyone's understanding, when the staff in a budget puts money in there, and for instance, the planter box replacement, $27,000 is just a number out of the air. We don't have any bids, any contractors who have looked at it ahead of time. If we had stayed at the smaller scope that's being talked about, just repair a few or whatever, $27,000 may have been enough. It could be insufficient. So I would, you know, counsel the TLC not to look at those numbers as something cast in concrete. Similarly, the $270,000 that it went to was an elevated one after the former city engineer started looking at the totality of the project, bringing water lines into those boxes, bringing electrical conduit into the boxes at the same time. Some of the thought process on the staff was, if you're trenching or boring for water lines, why not slip a conduit in there for electrical? Because, you know, there may be a need in the downtown area where the community events are located, and why not do it at the same time as opposed to do it only for water? And someone, we like to call them the construction sidewalk managers, they might say, well, that was really stupid of you, city. When you were in there boring for a water line, why didn't you slip a conduit in for electrical? And that makes sense. The $270,000 is only a placeholder of monies. It could be more. It could be less once that actual project is bid. So that would be part of my counsel to the TLC members, is that those numbers are not set in concrete. They may move depending upon the actual bid. But the other is to give you an idea of the oversight that was contemplated for the TLC as opposed to my understanding, was that there was a desire to start looking at bid documents and construction drawings and other things.
No, that was never our intent.
Okay, that's what I was informed of.
Julie?
So I guess then, one of the things with this particular item about the planter boxes, the advice we might be asking for from the TLC is, do you see a need for, do you think it is worthwhile to go super simple and just keep them as dirt that needs to be hand-watered? Or do you think it's advisable to add the water and potentially the electricity, as has been suggested by staff? And, you know, give us your opinion about both of them, considering all of the potential uses for those areas in the downtown, thinking about the level of maintenance that's required, you know, all of that kind of thing. Those kinds of feedback to us could be very helpful for options to include in a potential bid package. Would it be just the planter boxes? Would it be, and I would say, I doubt we would ever want to do just one or two, or five or six, and leave two or three out, because you do that, and all of a sudden, the new ones look great and the old ones just don't match. So try as hard as you would. I think if you're going to do something, you got to do it for all, but that's my opinion. But if you have ideas about that, suggest. For instance, if it had come in as just simply replacing the planter boxes that are broken with new planter boxes without the addition of water or electricity, I could see someone on TLC saying, well, wait a minute, let's think this through. This is Main Street that gets used all the time for lots of events, and it might be helpful to have electricity more available to those events. It might be a whole lot cheaper for staff if there was water already in those so that they don't have to go around and hand-water, or garden club has to go around and hand-water. I know you personally have carried a lot of buckets of water.
Many buckets.
But a lot of our volunteers are getting tired of doing all of that. And so that's one of those things that I think we need to think ahead for the future. These funds were put in place by the community to make our community look better, because everybody wanted it taken care of. I think they're pleased with the way they've been spent. And I think those kinds of advisory comments about the caliber, the level of improvement are helpful. We might not agree with you, because we might see, you know, something else, and we sometimes disagree with the planning commission too. But it would give us a range of choices or a range of things that staff can have bids taken on to see just what those hard numbers are going to be after somebody bids on it. Because until you put it out there for a contract, you have no idea what the bids are going to come in. And they always seem to be higher than what you expect. So.
So if I might, in summary, the expectation of the TLC Oversight Committee is that we receive ideas about proposed projects from Trails and Landscape, and we offer our opinion on whether or not we think that's a good idea, and we maintain oversight that monies that are spent are only going to Trails and Landscape and not being spent on new mailboxes or something.
Right. And if staff comes in with a list of 10 projects, and there's money for only some of them, help us to prioritize.
Okay. All right.
But before you leave.
Yes, sir.
I think you've gotten a lot of direction on this particular project, but I'd like to provide more clarity moving forward for new members who join TLC, for instance, so that they understand better what their role is. And I'd like to ask Laura, you did some research on these other communities, and we did set out the expectation of the role of the committee with that original resolution. And I think you had suggested at the outset that we might want to add more language to that resolution to provide more clarity about the level of oversight based on the examples from this evening that's expected from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I did research, and we kind of grabbed a couple of communities' resolutions where they have special oversight advisory committees for special taxes, is for special purpose. In their particular communities, it happened to be taxes for roads or other community improvements. And one was from Maraga, and one was from Pleasant Hill, and you can see in both those, they have slightly different language, but it tends to be specific in terms of clarifying that their role is not to get into the weeds, as Councilmember Pierce mentioned.
They approached it more positively, you should do this, and this, and this, and not this.
Right. We don't have the not this in ours, and we could, you know, phrase something that says something along those lines. Is that something that council feels would be helpful for the current and future TLCs?
I think it would be for the TLC as well.
And I just want to clarify, Councilmember Pierce made reference to the planter boxes and getting input from the TLC. The current project, as I mentioned in the staff report, goes back some years, and as was mentioned by Karen. So we weren't talking about, hopefully, revisiting this particular project, because that train's kind of left the station. But I think it was more direction to the future. But I think it was more direction to the future when staff comes forward to the committee.
Right.
This is their time to speak up. And unfortunately, in this particular instance, we had committee members that were not present at that June meeting. The majority that was there did recommend the, sort of expanded scope or the changed scope, which was necessary, that the planters needed to be replaced. And the, and the timing of their input, we're coming up on mid-year budget, and they can certainly provide thoughts on the mid-year budget as it looks forward to next year. And again, at the budget time cycle for them to, as council members have said, help prioritize and identify projects that they think would, the council should focus on, and that would be the appropriate timing.
Well, with this discussion presently in your head, I think it might be helpful if you did try to come up with some proposed language that could be added, so that Karen doesn't have to take this message back and try to repeat everything that was said this evening, to try to make some sense, not only of the particular direction for this project or that she's received this evening, but future applications for upcoming work to be done by the city, and that we rely on the input then from the TLC.
So you would be interested in having a resolution brought back to you that would make that adjustment?
I would think, but I'm waiting for another, more input.
I, I'm questioning whether a different resolution is the appropriate way to go about it, since that was a result of the election process, or whether it would be better to establish some guidelines? So that there would be some, an outline of what's expected? And guidelines for what, what things might be considered? I think that might be easier, sort of an orientation for the committee, maybe? I don't know.
I would agree.
I, I think, I think getting into the resolution again may or may not be appropriate, and I'm looking over to Mala to see if she thinks that's appropriate or not. Since it was a ballot measure, I'm not sure, I mean, I realize that.
That was the next source of inspiration we were going to get from our city attorney. Mala?
Sorry, I was just getting some clarification from the city manager. If you can give me a minute.
Sure.
Okay. Certainly, come up to the mic, please. We do get questions. Identify yourself as a member of the TLC and so forth.
I'm Marion Carol Moser. And I just want to add, being a relatively new member of the Landscape Committee, there's two factors that influence on supporting the oversight. And one was, one year, we actually had quite a bit of times where we didn't have meetings, and then I missed one. But what I'm actually saying is, when we came upon this planter box thing, it kind of made me wish that if we had more time, I could visualize and see what they're talking about, instead of thinking, oh my God, $300,000 from $25,000, you know, that type of thing. So what I'm asking is that when we have it, if we have a little more notification before our meetings, that when I see something with a large expenditure, or, to be truthful, as much as I walk around downtown Clayton, I never really noticed the planter boxes, but now we bring it up, I would look at it from a whole different perspective and saying, these look like, excuse me. So it would give me a chance to really look and totally support that budget and say, you know what, it's worth it, because our downtown is so darn cute, that anybody that comes to visit here just loves it. And I support anything we can do to improve it. So basically, my thing is, I'm a visual person, and so when I know what we're talking about, I can really go ahead and support the project. If this adds anything, I don't know, but thank you for hearing me.
I think that speaks to a little orientation on the projects as we evolve our membership.
Mala?
Yes, I think while you could amend this, we think it might be better to just create guidelines and keep this in place and not touch the resolution.
Okay. And Laura, you think you could capture then?
Please prepare to drop back and bring it back to you.
All right?
Perfect. I think that'll help everyone.
That sufficient direction for now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming.
Yes. All right. Let's move on then to the next action item, would be to consider the project concept designs for the North Valley Park Playground Rehabilitation Project, CIP number 10442, to include replacement of the resilient play surface, new playground apparatus, sheltered picnic canopies, and shade trees.
And here we have pretty pictures, too.
Yes. Our maintenance supervisor, Mark Janey?
You have enough further here. Good evening, Mayor, council members. You read the title, so we're discussing on another neighborhood park. This one's up in Keller Ridge area. And the playground and the play surface is existing there. It's been there about 20 years. I think it was the late 90s it was installed. And the play surface is in pretty bad shape, as you can see in the pictures, or the picture that was put into the packet. Anyway, I'll go over the options that we have gotten, just to give you some ideas on the playgrounds to replace. One of the parameters that we put was to make it fit within the area. It's a walled area, because I think it used to be a volleyball court before it became now a play structure.
It was kitty litter.
Well, yeah, it was that, too. It was, yeah. So it had a, it has a small wall that confines where the play structure is. And you can see that in the pictures of the existing, that I took three different angles of it. So to get some, again, what we were discussing, you were just discussing about the planter boxes, we actually went to some playground installers that we've used and asked for equipment that would fit in there with some numbers, so we could do it for budgeting purposes. And they gave us some of the pictures. So option one is from NSP3, which we have used, buying some of their equipment. And this one is a larger play structure than is existing in there. And by larger, I mean it just goes taller and it has a larger slide on it, but essentially has three slides as the original one. Then they gave on option two, a play structure that essentially replaces what's there. And I didn't get into the reasoning we were thinking of replacing the play structure. When we looked at the play surface, you had to tear it all up. And it's the rubber stuff, and they put it back down. Well, the, since the play structure's been there about 20 years in the full sunlight, it's plastic, it's wearing down. And it's all right shape right now, but maybe in three or four years, and then you just don't want to have to rip everything back out. And then you're putting a new play surface back in. And so the manufacturers thought, yes, it probably should be changed out at this time, even though it isn't showing any visual cracking right now from the sun, or destruction from the sun. But you're probably going to see that in the next couple of years. So option two is essentially what they gave us was replacing what is there. And, oh, I should have gone over the prices. Option one, they estimated it about $105,000 for that structure. And that includes the surface, tear out, install, everything for the play area. Option two is, comes in at about $73,000 to replace essentially what's there, again, rip out and putting in all new with the play surface. Option three came from another manufacturer that we use or installer, and it's a little different concept, as you can see in the pictures. It's more of a natural rocks for kids to climb on, with just basically one slide and a platform. It's not your typical play equipment. They had installed this in another neighborhood park, so they had the, essentially the same dimensions and the drawings that they could show us.
What park?
Uh, he didn't say. I did not get that. But he said it was put in, I'm sure it's locally, I know they do Walnut Creek. I want to say, oh, they do a lot in San Francisco, too, work. So those were the three structures that essentially we have, just to give you sort of an idea for discussion purposes, which way you want to go. And then the other ideas that came up is, there's two picnic benches that are up there, and those were replaced about, within the last five years. I can't pin it down. We had some surplus tables, actually, I think it was from the community park install. So we had those installed up there, they used to be wood, that were falling apart. And put some shade type of structure, and there was two different options they threw out there. And I was not able, they didn't, in time for the staff report to get me a pretty picture. But I think you can visualize, one is a sail made out of fabric, which I'm not real keen on, just because of maintenance. And the other would be a shade structure, such as we have the community park, the small ones, the individual ones, which I included a picture, so you can sort of get an idea of putting over there. And then the third suggestion that go on up there is replacement of trees. And I know Councilmember Shuwi mentioned that in the last. And yes, a lot of trees did not make it up there and didn't grow well. And would suggest like 20 to 25 spaced around, just for additional shade and to still keep areas open, so kids can throw balls or whatever they want to do up there. On the fiscal impacts, council already has budgeted in this year's budget, $165,800 towards this project. That doesn't include the trees. The trees would come from, in Luffy, developer in Luffy, which has $59,000 in it, which we would never spend that much to plant that, that many trees. So anyway, we're looking, I guess, for discussion and direction on which way you would like to go, and if you'd like the shade structures up there, and what type of playground.
Oh, oh, oh.
Where have I heard that shade structure word before?
Question, Dave?
Questions coming. I do not see any bids or breakdown of the cost for these options. Did you get something, or was this just a kind of a general 105, 73, 114?
No, we, they, for budgeting purposes, gave them to us actually before the budget cycle started. So I think I got them last May or April. So they'll fluctuate a little. What we're looking to do is either use CMAS or another government bidding service, there's a few of them.
Okay, so how much do you anticipate, based upon your experience, would be if you just replaced the resilient surfacing and kept the play structure?
It would be, because that's what we started with, one of the costs. The problem is, they're not quite sure what the sub base, remember, we ran into that at the Grove Park. But I think they put a little money in it, and they came, I think they came around $45,000 to $50,000 to do that.
I don't have any other question, I have lots of comments.
I just have comments, too.
Well, question then, just going with the surface, I mean, I did walk the, the area up there, and the surface obviously is coming apart, and it's now becoming a safety hazard. So I had concerns if, if we just exclusively replaced that, we'd have to cut around the existing feet, the footing of the existing play structures. So it seemed that would interfere with the integrity, or jeopardize the integrity of the new.
No, they tear, they did it at the Grove Park.
Do they?
You just, they just tears back. And if your subsurface, the subsurface is like base rock, if it needs to be recompacted to get back up to 90, 95% compaction, that's the only unknown, because you can't see until you expose it. But they can, they pour it right around the equipment.
Oh, okay, it's a pour it on surface.
Yeah, yes, it's mixed and poured onsite.
Well, as you, as you mentioned, it did look like the plastic or rubber sections were still holding up pretty well, but all of the joints in the tops were beginning to erode and rust. And, you know, once that starts, it really begins to accelerate. So it did look as though the entire play structure probably is in need of replacement, and now would be the time to do it. Is that what you're recommending?
Well, that's, and talking to the manufacturer, of course, they want to sell, but, yeah, plastic just beats down over time, and that is indirect sunlight all the time. And I'm just worried, you know, in three or four years, we'll be back here going, ah, we need to put new equipment, and then you do damage the surface, you're probably resurfacing it again.
Okay.
At, you know, $40,000, $50,000.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope. Just comments.
This is an action item, so I don't believe we need a public hearing.
No, but you can ask the public.
We could ask, we could ask for input, so I think I'll do that, though. I'll just ask if we have any comments from the audience, the input they'd like to provide. Come forward, please, put the mic, we do tape these.
I live up there, so I'm always having my dog at the park there. And the grass, though, has been down to just total weeds for the most part. And it's got all these plants that have these stickers in them now. And so even sometimes his pads, he'll start yipping. But I think because the sprinkler is probably, some of them weren't working during the summer. So if we're going to go through some of that, I suggest that maybe we could look at replanting some of the grass that's turned to a high percentage of weeds. And also, the upper level where there is a sidewalk that kind of surrounds the thing, I don't know how to say it, but anyhow, there's drainage that constantly comes down from the street above. And it has actually formed slime where it's really slippery, and it becomes, again, a hazard where somebody could actually slip easily, because I always walk on the grass part there and not on that sidewalk. Just input.
Okay. Any other comments about the play structure or surface being proposed? Seeing none, then I'll bring it back up to council for comments. Dave?
Do you want, I'm happy to go first on this.
Go right ahead. I don't know whether we'll agree or not.
Okay. Foundationally, just so people understand, this was how I got involved in Clayton politics. I moved, my first house was on Golden Eagle Way, and we had a kitty litter box. It was called a passive park, which meant nobody's going to go there. And we had a bunch of new families come in, and we went and we petitioned the city council, Julie, Pete Lawrence, everybody, and, and they were like, yeah, let's do this. I got on the, what was the committee? I can't even remember the committee now.
Community services.
Community service committee, basically to shepherd it through, because the council said, let's do this and do this. One thing that I have found from then and going forward in my legal profession is, if you think the trash business is seedy, the play structure business is seedier. The fact that they will, basically at any time, say you need to replace it all, it's outdated, it's all that, it's a bunch of crap, that play structure will last for another 40 years, you can replace some of the plastic as needed, you can do a lot of stuff with that. That metal up there will withstand the apocalypse. And having five kids and having played at that park for many, many years, you don't need the latest and the greatest, oh, we've come up with new features that kids like better. No, kids like to be with other kids and they like to play, whether, whatever it is. So I am adamantly against replacing the, the structure itself. The resilient surfacing is another BS thing that they got the legislature to buy into, because everybody's for children's safety. But, you know, sand and everything else was still appropriate, but of course, it's banned now. And so that is another racket, but it is bad up there, and it does need to be replaced. It can be easily replaced, just like we did at the downtown park. They cut around, and then they just pour it in, and it sets. And if they have to do some substrate work on it, which I would expect, because when you tear it out, you're going to have to at least replace some of the rock, because it sticks to the, to the subset, you're going to have to level it, recompact it, so what? That's, that's all part of the process. The trees up there have not grown since I moved in. And they clearly are not doing what was intended, and that is to provide shade. If you look at our downtown park and the size of those trees that were, were put in, and how much shade we now get in that park, my priorities for that, for that North Valley Park would be to resurface. be to resurface, to put in trees that will actually grow and eventually provide shade just like our downtown park. We have talked, Julie, I, maybe three or four times, because I know I've brought it up multiple times, we have talked about putting in those sails, actually putting in some other, and this might be an appropriate time to do it, to put in some other metal stanchions on the corners and you can actually put those sails, those canvas sails over the top to provide sun protection over the actual play structure itself, which is, would be much better use of the funds so that it can be used in the summer because having been out there when it's 102, you don't last long. But with the sun sails, they have, Murphy's has an awesome, does an awesome job of this in their park downtown and there's great ways to do that. But trees, shade structure, the, the grass, yeah, we basically, that, you know, the weeds from the hillside migrate down when we have the drought and when the grass dies. So maybe we could put a little more effort and remediation into that. And we might even have to put a little drainage ditch or some better drainage on that upstairs, upper part of the sidewalk as was mentioned because I have also seen that, it's been there for, for years also where it just drains and it comes right across. But it seems to me, and then again, for the shade structures, I would definitely agree with staff that you don't want to put in those, the umbrella type. The CCP has done amazing with the shade structures we put up there and to put up one or two there that would provide, you know, families a place would be great. So those are my thoughts, but I will adamantly vote until I die that, you know, don't buy into this, oh, it all needs to be replaced. I went up there and I looked again and there's nothing wrong with that and if something needs to be replaced, we have replaced, since I've been on the council, multiple slides that have, you know, been degraded over time and you can easily do that for a lot less money and staff can even put it in. So that, those are my thoughts.
Joy?
Well, number one, I'm really glad to hear that hill is draining.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, that's really.
Given our concerns, yeah.
That's really a good thing because otherwise that hill could be in the park. So that's, that's really good. I think we can have staff look at, engineering staff can work together to figure out a way to keep the sidewalk from being slimy because of the, of the drainage, but I'm really glad to hear that that's happening. That wasn't tonight's agenda item, so that's just a comment. Definitely we need to replace the resilient surface. I agree a bit with David, I think we've gotten a little overly cautious. I still think wood chips work just great, but you can't roll a wheelchair through wood chip, so that makes it inaccessible. So I get that part too. So definitely the resilient surface. I would like to have somebody, our engineer, along with staff, take a really close look at the integrity of the structure itself. I think we all know that the plastic, as it ages, needs to be replaced. And if they are easily replaceable plastic parts and it doesn't cost more to replace the plastic than it would the whole structure, then I'm okay with replacing the plastic parts as needed, as long as they're still available. That's the other issue, is that model going to still be available? Because, you know, we had some issues with, with getting some of the replacement parts for the, for the Grove Park in a timely manner. They were still available, but it was a timeliness issue and we had to close it off for a while. So I'd like to evaluate really whether it needs replacing or not. If it does, yes, let's replace it, but if we can get by and we think it's going to last for a good long time, I'm, I'm fine with that. I don't want to have to go five years and tear it up. If, if there is truly corrosion in some of the metal joints and things like that, then I think we need to go ahead and replace it now rather than replacing the play surface twice. So that's going to have to be a cost evaluation thing and, and I trust our staff to do a careful look at the integrity of the metal parts up there. If we're looking at design wise, if we were to make that step to replace aesthetically and watching children play down at the elementary school, as I very frequently do with grandchildren, I would say a cross between two and three is what I'd like because I like the natural look of number three, I don't like the price on it. Option two, the similar to what we have right now, gives the kinds of place apparatus that the kids really, really like. They still like to swing like a monkey from one bar to the next and some of those that don't have them, the kids don't care. But if you go down to the elementary school and watch where those kids are playing, they're all lined up behind some of those pieces of equipment, others, they could care less. Just climbing up and down and running through things is not that important to them. Even the slides are not that big a deal for all the kids. They like to climb, they like to swing, they like to be monkeys out there and, and they have a blast doing it. So more power to them and strength building too. But I do like the, the more natural look of number three, but it's, doesn't look that interesting. Shade structure, I would go with what we've got in the community park over the tables. I think the metal will hold up far better than any canvas anything. Having canvas shade sails in my backyard, I know that they can take about three years of sun and then they're dead. And that's only if you take them in during, during the winter. So trees, absolutely, let's do what we can, let's fill that in with some, some decent shade. I think if you actually got some shade up there, the grass would probably do a whole lot better too. It would probably, the soil would hold the moisture a little bit better than getting beaten on like the Sahara up there because it, it is unbelievably hot up there with the wind. So what did we miss? I think that's it.
Just to add, I agree with the, maintaining the structural integrity of that and I think that that can be done very economically and I know the staff can probably do that. That resilient surface is becoming a safety hazard and so we need to address that. I, I don't know how you prioritize what needs to get done when, but that's something we need to look at and imagine. I also agree with some shading up there because it does get brutally hot.
Turi?
So, I mean, it sounds like everybody's sort of in agreement on the surface itself, so can I ask staff to come back? I have just two questions, Mr. Danny. So, so I mean, there's certainly a difference between what sort of the manufacturer's life expectancy versus what actually lasts, but if you look at sort of a new surface, you know, if that's poured, so what's the typical life expectancy or what would you look at, expect?
Depends how it's maintained. If you go in and recoat them every few years with the epoxy they use, they can last a long time, but typically it can be anywhere from eight to 15 years is a fairly good, because like at the community park, I had them looked at about a year, year and a half ago and they said they're probably good for another three or four years. They, again, you know, wanted to spend some money and, and it was quite pricey, so I didn't even bring it forward to put the epoxy on top of it, it's a coating, to rebind it, but it only gives it another couple of years and with the cost of that binder, it, it gets very expensive if you want to maintain it that way and only get maybe a couple more years out of it.
Okay, so but eight to 15 typically, kind of what you would expect?
Yeah, it depends on the kids, how much they tear it up and we have to keep patching it and the sun, just, there's a lot of different influences on it.
Okay. And then my other question is obviously, so I guess the current play structure is 20 years old, but, so what's a typical life expectancy? Again, I realize it has to do with the quality and everything, but what would you, what have you seen we've got?
Well, actually, one good point was brought up by council member Price, Pierce, I'm sorry, and that is finding parts that is getting older. I don't even know the make of it, the brand. That might be a Miracle system up there, but I'm not sure. And with anything in this city, as it's been aging, it's been harder to find replacement parts for, you know, buildings, anything, because manufacturers love to change things.
Okay.
Yeah, planned obsolescence.
Yeah. Exactly.
So Mark, you don't know if this is just a common design that we probably.
Oh, no, no play structure is common design.
They all have their unique design.
Yeah, the Grove to the community park, completely different with the parts list and what you have to order, same manufacturer.
Did you actually look at replacement parts for the existing structure?
No, I do not know the make, like I said, of the North Valley structure. I think it's probably Miracle, it might have a tag somewhere on it.
I believe it's Miracle, but I know we've got the records for that because we, we did a lot on it, so it's there.
Yeah, so, you know, they're, they're a big manufacturer, so they may build the slides that fit that still, I have no idea though.
But we could find out.
Yeah, oh yes, of course. And, and everyone was talking about the integrity, what I would suggest, I was going to suggest to the city manager, is we probably get a playground expert to go up there and actually give it his opinion, what we should do.
Of somebody who doesn't sell stuff.
A we hire.
No, God, it's another scam. Come on, you guys are, you're experienced enough to go up there and see if there's, I, I looked at it, it's fine. I mean, but I'm not the expert, you've been doing it. Go up there and look and see, we don't need an expert to go out there.
You've got to sit there, he can find somebody to look at it.
Let me, let me state though, we've already replaced a lot of those rocks on, you know, because they break off on the climbing wall and that's the plastic breaking down with the stress of, you know, kids climbing them.
Sure.
And I would say those slides have held up quite well up there because we have, as you mentioned, replaced slides at the other parks.
Oh, yeah.
Beat them up.
And they still look to be in pretty good shape.
Yes, they do.
Any more questions?
So I, I think my, my comment is, so it sounds like the surface needs to be done, I think we sort of are, concur with that. So if we can get eight to 15 years out of the surface, I definitely would want to know, you know, can the structure itself last, sort of the similar lifespan? And I think that in part that depends, can we get parts for it because, you know, those slides do wear out, the plastic parts do wear out sooner. So I think that's one question I would have, can we do that? I mean, I, some of the same lines with Shuwe in terms of, you know, I have only two kids, so I can only comment, but I have enough hours in parks too, but.
Yours are more active than mine though, so.
We'll see, yeah, but, you know, kids do like just, they're not always looking at the latest and greatest, you know, the kids want to go to the park and like you said, play with the other kids, you know, and I was looking at the different designs, even if we need to replace it, yes, I like the number three because it looks pretty natural, but at the same time, we live in Clayton, we're full of natural creeks and rocks and whatnot, so if the kids really want to play in the natural setting, you don't need to go to the park to do that necessarily either. So I'm definitely in agreement with if we can add shade and trees, that definitely can increase the usability of the park regardless of what kind of structure we have there. But in terms of the play structure itself, I would like to maybe understand a little bit more as to how long, is it really in the current condition, can it last? You know, sort of the life expectancy of the next surface or not? And can we get parts?
Well, okay, Dave.
Well, no, if you go ahead, I just have a couple of comments after you finish your comments about going forward.
Well, as Turi was trying to come up with a summary really of the discussion, I think we do agree that we need, certainly need a new surface, that's becoming a safety hazard, that's coming apart. Metal shades certainly are preferred over the fabric, new trees certainly replace the ones that have died and not done well. So let's learn from experience and look at the trees that have done well in Clayton and provide shade, that's what we're trying to create up there. The only questionable area would be the play structure itself and sounds like we'd like more research done to see if the existing structure can be maintained just by replacing the parts that do need replacement. Because it seems to be a play structure that's certainly used and in pretty good shape, all but a few pieces possibly might need to be replaced at this time, but the replacement issue is a concern. And if we can't find replacement parts going forward, that certainly needs to be factored into the new play structure. So I think that's the major question that needs to be addressed. The other issues I heard are pretty much in alignment on the surface and the shade and the trees. So is that sufficient direction?
Well, okay, so one of the things I would like to know is where this version three play structure has been put in, because it does, you know, on, on one hand, kind of look neat if we were going to have to do that over my dead body, but I'd like to see it in, in actual, you know, see what it's, what it looks like and, and get a feel for, you know, how it's going to be. And then, you know, if we're going to bring this back, I, I would like at least to explore the option of when we're putting in the, the new surface, to put in some anchors for potentially putting some, some shade structures over the actual play structure itself. As Julie said, there, there are, you know, there's an useful life there that if you keep it up all the time, but again, I've seen cities where they use that and it actually does allow kids to play on there in 110 degree weather because it's not direct.
But it's just not year round.
But it's, yeah, you can't do it year round, we wouldn't need it year round. We could probably put it up for, you know, three, three months.
Turn on the sprinklers.
So I'd like to see that as an option and what the cost is of that because I think we can, we'd rather use the money for that than new play structure. And please, for the love of all that is holy, please do not hire an expert from the play structure industry who will tell you, oh, yeah, it needs to be gone. That's their business and it's, Scott, I'm sure can go up there and look at it and say, yep, good to go. Right, Scott?
Well.
I heard him say yes.
There are, there are actually playground safety inspectors that are not, you know, there to sell materials that are not associated with manufacturers, so we can go and look for that aspect.
Before we close off the discussion, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council with input? Please come up to the mic. Again, identify yourself.
Anne Stanaway. And one comment, you make some very good points about heat and that is that in the summer Clayton gets really hot and the kids don't like the heat. Please do not put heat sinks in that park, do not put rocks in there. All they do is absorb the heat and then not only does it stay hot during the day, but the, the rocks let off the heat at night. You're talking heat sinks here and it is not a good idea at all. I recommend your trees up there are suffering from tree root problems and the tree roots are too hot, mulch the tree roots. There are tons of people out there, land, tree people that cut down trees and the city even has this. So you've got a wood chips that you can put around the bottoms of the trees so that they will retain the moisture around the bottoms of the trees, they will have cooler roots and they will grow better. So any trees that you put in there, be sure and mulch them because that is going to help you get the amount of shade that you want up there, okay? So those two things.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, but it sounds like then we're not yet ready to approve all of the requests in the, this particular item. So I believe we would like some additional research and bring this issue back to the council.
Sorry to make more work, but.
Is that sufficient, did you receive sufficient direction on the questions?
Yes, Mayor, we have.
All right, all right. Then let's move on then to the next item on the agenda and that would be item 8C, the city council discussion of proposed uses for a portion or all of its $299,222 in general fund excess monies from fiscal year 2016-17 on one-time unmet priority need expenditures, equipment or capital projects. City manager, Kevin?
Thank you very much, Mayor Hayden. So staff recommends that the city council approve the assignment of $299,000 in general fund excess monies from the prior fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. general fund excess monies from the prior fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. And as reported on page 29 of the CAFR, or Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which I'll just, basically the financial statements of the city, uh, the general fund closed last fiscal year with an increase in, uh, in fund balance of $299,222. So that same CAFR also reported an unassigned reserve fund balance of the general fund of approximately $5.429 million, which exceeds the general fund appropriations for fiscal year 2018 by 1.21 times, um, which we like to point out regularly at our, in our budget narratives and mid-year budgets, of course, which is a phenomenal feat, especially when compared to, um, some of the, some of the local cities similar to our size in Contra Costa County, as well as any other city. Um, however, it continues to be the recommendation of staff and, of course, our city manager, Mr. Gary Napper, that we, we should strive to maintain a city of our size, a, a reserve of approximately one full year's budget, which would allow us in some kind of an emergency situation to continue operations absent any additional revenues. However, a, a ratio of 1.21, a fund balance to budget, is, is pretty phenomenal. So with the policy of the city producing an annually balanced general fund budget with an operating surplus, it's difficult, if not impossible, to incorporate larger-ticket non-recurring needs into the operating budget. So acknowledging this, in the past, twice previously, the City Council has, uh, twice previously earmarked the general fund excess for fiscal year 2016, as well as the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015, for specific needs of the city. Um, specific prior approved funded projects by the City Council include, but are not limited to, the purchase of a mini excavator for the Public Works Department, uh, the repaint and re flooring improvements for Endeavor Hall, uh, the replacement of grills at the Clayton Community Park, the replacement of the City Hall HVAC and boiler system, uh, as well as several other pressing needs of the city. So the status of the two prior assignments that the City Council has approved of uses of the general fund excess for fiscal year 15 and 16 are outlined in much greater detail in the staff report on page two and three. My recollection of that, without looking at the staff report, is the cer-, the, the excess for fiscal year 2016 has been fully utilized for its design purposes, and for the, uh, the excess for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015, there still are some residual ticket items. Most of the larger ticket, um, needs that were identified, one was the entryway cameras for the police department have already been installed, and there are some additional items that will, may roll into next fiscal year, but they, they're, the impending completion of those projects is coming up, at least within the next year. So previously, at the October 17th, 2017 City Council meeting, um, we presented the CAFR for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017, and staff had discussed its intent on bringing an updated list of current need, pressing needs of the city, proposed to be funded by the, uh, $299,000 in general fund excess for last fiscal year. So after consultation with the, uh, department heads of the city, um, and some brainstorming meetings, we did come up with a new listing, which is included as Exhibit A to the staff report. Thank you, our city clerk is helping me out here with this now. I just hit the AV mute. Maybe I didn't. Try it again? Maybe power first? And then AV mute?
Apologize, I've never had to use this.
Yeah, we're going, uh, we're using a different projector system. Yeah, I tried AV mute twice, but... So included in Exhibit A to the staff report is a listing of the, the one-time pressing needs that we have now compiled, um, which have also been discussed at the, uh, January 3rd City Council Budget Subcommittee Meeting, which, um, we did receive the support of the two, uh, City Council members that are a part of that committee. And it should also be noted when referring to the exhibit, um, which is incredibly difficult to, to read from here, but at least we know you have one in, in front of you.
But it's, it's coming in, I think.
Hopefully the viewers...
It's giving clur.
Yes. Hopefully the viewers from home can get a, a better shot of that. Um, however, this isn't, this, this doesn't purport to be a listing of all of the needs of the city, it's just identified as the priorities that we have. And I should also point out, um, unfortunately, a lot of the items, if not most of the items on this listing, are not very, um, exciting or illuminating for the city. However, they are very high needs, and a lot of them pertain to new state mandates that we have to comply with, uh, as part of the, the services that we provide to the community for public safety, engineering, public works and planning, and all of those various services. So, um, most of the items listed in that exhibit, uh, are accompanied by an asterisk, which indicates that it isn't an actual tangible quote that we've received yet, but it's the best professional judgment of the department head or management that did the research on that need. Um, and what would happen is, should the City Council approve the staff recommendations, uh, which is on the priority list, that everything above the blue line, uh, that adds up to the $299,000, um, anything that was, would be indicated with an asterisk, um, staff would come back to the City Council at a later meeting, um, and provide a recommendation to a contractor in accordance with the city, uh, procurement policy, competitive bid requirements. So, uh, just to kind of go over some of the, uh, big-ticket items on the listing, if I, if you want to take a look at Exhibit A while I'm going over these. Uh, the first two items actually came from our police department, um, and really they are to comply with, with federal mandates and to, to be in line with Concord PD, who, with whom we contract for dispatch services for the city. So the first item estimated, actually not estimated, doesn't have an asterisk, so that is based on tangible figures, uh, that the department head did obtain, is $96,000 to replace the mobile data terminals and all nine of the patrol vehicles we have. And that would be to keep up with the updates that the, uh, City of Concord PD is already doing, um, so we would, we would need to do those to be able to communicate well with them. Uh, the second item at, uh, a non-estimated tangible $25,000 is the installation of a new AT&amp;T business line, uh, which would keep us in compliance with new, uh, federal Department of Justice security requirements. And some of that, that, that figure is split between 10K for firewall and then Concord IT time to, to install it. The third item on the list at $25,000, that is an estimate from our Community Development Director, and that would be to reevaluate the existing open space development impact fee that the city currently has. As I understand, it's, it's very old, and a revaluation of that fee is, is needed to verify that the city is collecting the appropriate amount and to solidify, uh, the nexus that was created in the original study. So on a side note, with that $25,000, the intent with that proposed use would be to find one professional consultant that could help the city set a, an affordable housing-in-lu fee, which is a new requirement with the, uh, Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that was recently adopted. And that is, uh, a mandate that we are, are going to have to get in line with soon. Uh, the good news is that the other half of that, of the $50,000 estimated cost for that contract, would be funded by a special, uh, revenue fund of the city for the affordable housing, where we have our successor housing funds. So that's why just half of that $50,000 estimated contract would be, needed to be funded by the general fund excess from last year. The fourth item, estimated at $50,000, is to prepare the green infrastructure plan, um, which the city is required to have in place by September 30th, 2019, and that is an unfunded mandate from, uh, the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And the executive summary, uh, about that is that any retrofitting of existing impervious services would be required to be in compliance with a green, with a GI plan, a green infrastructure plan, and currently we don't have one. Um, so that's, that's definitely needed. And, and I should also point out, if, if the City Council has any other more technical questions on these items, we do have some very qualified members from our department, our department heads over here that would be more than happy, I'm sure, to delve into those, uh, details. So the fifth item is, uh, estimated at $45,000, which is to update the local hazard mitigation plan. Recently, Contra Costa County did implement their plan in 2017. Um, this would allow us to get in line with what they have already. And really, the city would need to have a, a local hazard mitigation plan to be eligible to receive reimbursement from FEMA if a disaster were to occur. And not only just reimbursement for damages or loss, but also preventative, we, we would be eligible for some preventative grant funding as well, to do some studies and design programs. And of course, with everything that's gone on with Napa County and Sonoma County with the fires, and of course, Southern California, this is, uh, became a kind of a big-ticket item for city staff to look into, to, to kind of be prudent and be ahead of this, um, before anything like that were to happen. Wasn't too long ago that we had the, the fires on Mount Diablo, so this could potentially open up some funding for any damage that the city could incur from a disaster like that. The final item we have on our, our high priority list items is, uh, basically the placeholder to utilize the remainder at $58,000, which would be to augment the newly created Pension Rate Stabilization Internal Service Fund, which the City Council, uh, established, uh, for, in the current fiscal year, at the start of the current fiscal year, to basically act as a buffer against CalPERS actuary actions, um, and any lowering of the discount rate. So it was an internal tool designed by the, the city, approved by the City Council, to basically hedge against any detrimental action that, that CalPERS were to take or the market. And it could potentially allow us to stabilize the budget, uh, if there's any uncertain action taken by, by CalPERS on the rates, um, for our pension plan. Um, so that summarizes the six main items on, on the priority list. Uh, there are some other items that staff, uh, compiled from the department heads that were also needs of the city, but weren't as pressing and, uh, recommended for action immediately, like the top ones. Um, so with that, I would like to pass the item back to the City Council for, uh, discussion.
Well, just, uh, observations, uh, we did meet with, uh, Kevin and Gary, uh, Tuya and I, and had gone over this, and I found it very helpful when you explained the difference between excess and surplus, and thought that might be helpful for, uh, the general public, to explain, uh, where these funds have come from.
Yes. So essentially, surplus is, is, it's a, an accounting term that implies you, you either have an increase in fund balance or a decrease in fund balance. So you're better off or you're worse off. But the budgetary definition of surplus is a little bit different, and it implies, well, we have more than we need. So, you know, why don't we refund it back to, you know, the taxpayers or do, do other things with it? So excess kind of implies that, well, our actual expenditures were a little bit less than we budgeted, and our, our actual revenues came in higher than our budget anticipated, so we have, we have an excess. We still have many needs that we need to address, but it's not a surplus, as in, you know, there's not great uses that we can use for this money to, um, help address all the services, all the needs that we have for the community.
And the other item was that, uh, the $299,000 target that you set was the appropriate level to still leave enough money in the general fund at the appropriate level.
Yeah.
So that's what resulted in the $58,000 for the pension fund, stabilization fund. You, you kind of backed into that, that was the balance after the items above it, uh, had the amounts allocated for them had been determined, that was the balance then to achieve the $299,000.
That's correct.
And you did set that list by priority.
Correct.
The way it's listed here. Right.
If I could, Mayor, just, uh, on that note, I don't want to de-minimize the, uh, suggestion or, that's recommended for assignment of monies to the, uh, uh, what we are now referring to as the Pension Rate Stabilization Fund. I think we all know that at any given time, there can be a message coming out of the CalPERS board that puts the city into a negative, or any city into a negativity. So, um, it wasn't the, you know, I, I'm a little concerned that there was the, the simplicity of, "Oh, well, we, gosh, had $58,000 left, um, and so we, we just even it off to $299,000." No, there was a conscious decision, and perhaps you didn't mean it that way, but I just wanted to make certain that, no, we think it's important to continue to build up that buffer, because they're talking about lowering that discount rate each and every time they meet, and each time they do that, uh, that creates fiscal impact to, uh, agencies that are members of CalPERS.
Good. Thank you. Question?
Maybe I can just add, I mean, so we did discuss in the committee, the items really at length as to what they mean, and then, and maybe I can just add, on the first five, certainly, I mean, few of them are, are required, so that it's really not an option necessarily as to whether to spend it on those, um, uh, needs or not. And then few of them, few of the others are perhaps not mandatory or required, but there are certainly things that we ought to have in place and ought to do in order to not have other negative consequences. So, you know, maybe that, that much insight.
Yeah, we kind of tested everyone as we went down the list to see is this really needed? And after the full explanation, it did appear that way.
And, and just to adding on to, that doesn't mean that the items below, um, are unnecessary, and also it doesn't mean, for instance, the body cameras. It doesn't mean that we cannot accomplish them without using it, the funding at this particular moment in time, but the timing of that, um, before we get body cameras for our police officers, I think there needs to be some community discussion, there needs to be discussion with the police officers, there needs to be a policy in place, uh, and we felt that at this time, the $3,000 expense, if we go through all that, could probably be absorbed within the existing budget, and so we didn't think it was necessary that it rose to the level of priority at this time.
I, I appreciated your explanation on, uh, the $58,000 for the, uh, stabilization fund, but help me understand that, that wasn't a number that you had picked out originally and then backed into that with the $299 for the others? Is that, is that a...
No, I, I think actually, uh, council member...
Yeah.
Uh, that it was, we went, I, I prioritized the top items as I was, you know, concerned for, as your city manager, and I looked at the items below the blue line, and I felt at that moment in time, with the monies that were left, I felt stabilizing our CalPERS exposures...
Okay.
...was of a higher priority than the rest of the items in there. That's not, again, to diminish that, do we need emergency operations training? Certainly. Our body cameras, you know, uh, uh, you know, an item that we want to take a look at in the future? Certainly. And we also want to stop the circuit breakers at City Hall from chirping. However, we found oddly enough that after the HVAC system has finally come on board and they've stopped using our electricity to install it, um, and we then unplugged our space heaters, uh, in City Hall, suddenly the circuit breaker seemed to be working fine. So, um, but hopefully that responds.
Yeah, no, no, that, that helps clarify. Thank you very much.
All right. That seemed to address any other questions of staff. Let me, uh, go ahead and bring it up then for... That's additional comment. What we're looking for, really, is whether or not we want to agree that the, to implement the recommendations that were included in this, uh, report then from staff. Julie?
Well, I appreciate all the work that the Budget Subcommittee and Kevin and, and Gary have gone to in putting this together. That, that's very helpful, and I'm very glad to get some of these finally on the list to be funded. I think I've been badgering for about 10 years to get some of these things on there, because if you don't have your local hazard mitigation plan and some of these other things in place, you literally cannot get federal money after a disaster. You don't qualify. And, you know, we, as Kevin mentioned, we had that fire up on the top of Mount Diablo, and we looked out our back windows and we said, "Please don't come on down the ridge, please don't come down the ridge." Because we remember, some of us are old enough to remember, some of you weren't born yet. In 1977, it burned down to, and burned some of the back fences in Regency and in Dana Hills. And it came down with a fury, and it was all the firefighters could do to stop it. We didn't have weather situations then like we do now. And it, it could very easily happen here, just like it happened up in the, the North Bay. And so we need to be prepared. I, I think there are some other things we need to do, and I'm working on that. I'll bring back some information at another meeting, but, uh, I think that's really important. I am glad to hear that the circuit breaker... I am glad to hear that the circuit breakers are finally settling down. Now, space heaters aren't being plugged in. They do suck a lot of juice, there's no question about that. Because I was going to say, maybe we at least need to get an estimate on what it takes to upgrade the panel. And, and do that, that might not be such a bad idea anyway, just for preventive, and it might not be that expensive. So I think it might be something we need to look at. I don't remember off the top of my head how big that circuit panel is from when we remodeled City Hall, but I'm betting it's not over a 200-amp circuit breaker. I think it's, might be right at 200, yeah. Yeah. But I've got more than that in my house. And we're running a lot of computers. And, you know, it's, it's important, we haven't been through air conditioning yet with the new system, so we don't know what kind of draw that's going to have on it. So I think we need to, to at least get an estimate of what that is and package that in as we're, we're looking for next year. But I agree with, with all of these. I think if you're looking for a motion, Mr. Mayor, I would be happy to make approving the priorities as set forward by the city staff.
Second?
Can move in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Have we had public comment?
I was just going to say, I wasn't sure if there was any public comment.
Well, was there a public comment?
Then, then let me open it up to public comment. Sorry. Mark, would you like to come forward and identify yourself?
Mark Ventura, 1505 Tara Court. In an ideal world, that's more of a question, what would be, in an ideal world of unlimited funds, which I realize doesn't exist, but what would be a good number to fund our CalPERS supplemental fund, whatever you, you call it? What good number you would, you would like to see in there?
It's, CalPERS, that's a difficult answer to say because I'll tell you why. CalPERS is a moving target. And each time a city goes to, let's say, pre-fund or fund its unfunded liabilities, then CalPERS will make changes in its own methodologies and over what time period. However, in answer to your question, the, the answer is millions of dollars, probably tens of millions of dollars.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the CalPERS, I should add, also publishes actuarial reports every single year. Usually, they come out in around October or August, and those are all publicly available for all participating agencies. Anyone, any member of the public can go onto CalPERS and download those. And they have a page on those for each city's own actuarial report, and it's called the termination liability. And it is substantial. Because we, we've looked at, into that as well, of course, as staff as options, and the city manager, Mr. Gary Knapp, is absolutely correct. We're looking like for each plan in the tens, tens of millions of dollars.
Well, if I might, Mr. Mayor, actually, today, the, the question is timely because today I received as an email, a study that was performed by some policy center, but they're looking at public pension systems. And I shot it over to our finance manager, and he came back with an analysis, he looked at it immediately. And the whole study was aimed at what cities in California are in the riskiest position in terms of being able to fund their unfunded liabilities. And there are 427 cities, and actually Clayton, the converse, we were not in the top 20 worst. We were actually at number 400 as in the cities best positioned to handle their CalPERS exposures. Now, that doesn't mean that everything is fine, it just means that we have, through a series of actions, coming up with different CalPERS plans for, you know, different tiered employees, as well as, you know, how we're funded, as well as our actuarial reports, we're actually in, once again, a quite a better position than most cities in California.
All right. Thank you. We've actually already ruled on this motion. It's been approved. But thank you for the additional information you got out of the staff. This is a moving target and going to be an ongoing issue with most city governments. Next item then would be...
Are you sure we voted on that?
Yeah.
Did we?
We did.
We actually did.
Yeah, we did.
It was, it was not very audible, but we did. Suffice it to say, it was unanimous, I believe.
If there's any question, it's been moved and seconded that we authorize the expenditure pursuant to the recommendation in the package from the finance manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's been unanimous then.
We read loud enough that time.
No doubt. Next item then would be to consider the adoption of a resolution approving various percentage adjustments to and establishing new salary ranges for four management job classifications of the city: chief of police, community development director, finance manager, and assistant to the city manager. City Manager Gary?
Thank you, Mayor Hayden. Members of the council, a lot of what I do as your city manager is, comes to you with what I would call external improvements to our community. You can see that by, you know, updates to playgrounds, planner boxes, or other types of things. However, as your manager, I'm also charged with the operations and efficiency of a municipal organization that consists of personnel and primarily the people in those particular positions. Over the course of the last year, 10 years or so, I think it's easy to convey that we have had at City Hall at all levels, a turnstile approach to employee recruitment and retentions. I would note for you that in 2002, when I started the City Managers' Recognition of the Outstanding Employee Award, of the 15 people that have been given that award, there are only four individuals remain on staff. That's a 27% retention. Now, not all those individuals left for greener pastures, although I think you could probably convey retirement might be considered a greener pasture in some respects. So, but there is turnover, and it happens at all levels of the, you know, municipal organization. One of the duties that I'm charged with, actually by the municipal code, is your city manager, and I'll quote now in section 2.10.070F. It says, "The city manager shall, quote, 'conduct studies and effect such administrative organization in reorganization of offices, positions, and units under his/her direction as are in the interest of efficient, effective, and economical conduct of the city's business,'" end quote. Some of you, or most of you might recall that in August of 2016, I came to you with a reorganization plan of the maintenance department, which you supported, and we added actually additional employee position to that maintenance department. Last year, after a retirement at the maintenance supervisor level, there were additional reorganizations that I brought to you, all in the context of trying to create greater efficiencies and greater effectiveness. I'm now bringing this item to you that I am concerned, and I know that as our organization, we're spending a lot of time trying to recruit, attract, and retain individuals, particularly at the management level. For instance, you know that with Chief Kreins, who's sitting in the back here, he's an interim individual. We'd love for him to, you know, not continue as a CalPERS annuitant and finalize with ourselves, but frankly, I think Chief Kreins would tell you is, there's no reason I would come out of retirement and take a lower-paying job with the city as a CalPERS, because the methodology of that retirement pension is at risk. I am finding, as I'm, you know, we are now stabilizing ourselves and we have management personnel, I'm concerned very bluntly to you that there are some management personnel that are likely to leave us. They are extremely capable, they are marketable, and they're employable, not only here but in other venues. And so what I was looking at, is there a way that perhaps I can delay that inevitable? At the same time that we as a city organization continue to benefit from the experiences as well, the professionalism that they bring to us at the table? So based upon that, I started taking a look at some of the management positions, the key management positions, I would call them the work autonomously, you know, for the most part, as well as, that are the most difficult to fill. Because you have seen through the series of chief of police recruitments, inevitably the individual I select, when I'm getting down to what's negotiating an acceptable salary, they don't want to stay within the parameters of the existing salary range. They say, is there more available? And I'm finding, I'm seeing that if individuals leave, are we competitive enough in the marketplace to continue to attract not only the pools of qualified candidates, but candidates that will actually be able and want to stay here? I know, and I've often used it, that, gosh, it only takes one successful candidate for us to find within a particular recruitment. I can tell you that, that one candidate who is willing to accept a lower-end pay scale in Contra Costa County for that level of job, and is willing to stay here for an extended period of time, continues to get narrower and narrower. It takes a, a special individual at a management level to be able to, you know, wish to remain and not go for greener pasture somewhere else. I'll use myself as an example. I, you know, we're actually, you're, we're very unique in the city of Clayton, that I have been here as long as I have as your city manager. If and whenever I go or I retire, I would expect that you would probably find a younger city manager, number one. And number two, an individual that probably would stay three to five years and then move along. What I'm trying to do with the proposal for you tonight is to try to keep what we have, and if not, be able to keep what we have with just some marginal movements, then reposition ourselves that if and when we go out, that opportunity pool opens up a little greater. So with that background in mind, I have a proposal to you that I've looked at the four positions that the mayor read, the chief of police position, the community development director position, the finance manager position, and the assistant to the city manager position. My proposal is that for three of those, I would, I'm recommending to you that you bump those by 5%. And I'll show you charts that you already have in your staff report that shows even with those 5%, they don't begin to reach the market level. And that market level, for instance, you know, we are below market at every level of positions within the city. But I think by trying to make some steps forward, rather than just doing the CPI, and we have been trying to keep pace with the CPI, but given our financial constraints, even that has been difficult. And we're finding that other cities are actually having this dialogue and conversation as we're having right now, and they are actually throwing more money into those positions because they are in the same market as us to attract competent individuals to perform the services of the city. So with the chief of police position, which is the second highest paid position in the city, you can see the overhead that's up there, I will be able to see it as soon as I put my glasses on. And I've indicated there what the current monthly salary range is, and then with a 5% proposed increase, what it would go to. And I'm recommending that 5% increase be immediate, if you find that acceptable. In addition, the, all four of these positions are in what's called a miscellaneous unit for bargaining purposes. And I've noted there for the third line that this would not be in lieu of, or in replacement of, the 3% COLA that would come in the negotiated package in July of 2018. Why? Because number one, it was negotiated, but number two, then we're really, the net effect is only a 2% increase, and that's, that's marginal. Then, in the absence of doing a comprehensive salary survey, which many cities do, we do not, as I indicated in the staff report, number one, because the, number one, it's expensive to have an outside individual come in and do that. And then number two, frankly, as a city, you can't afford the outcomes of that. Because we must acknowledge that we are, as the smallest city in the county, at the low end of the employment scale for all positions. However, just as a simple test of where we are comparatively, I've included the next two cities in each of these categories as to, the next two smallest cities, as to what the comparable professional in those cities are making. Moraga, chief of police, is at $15,884 a month. That equals about $190,000 a year. That's Moraga, the next smallest city. Now, comparing apples to apples, we don't have the same income stream and revenue that Moraga does. Moraga has a fairly healthy sales tax base, which they have. And yet, they, they are also in some serious of financial straits as well. Arinda, you know, Arinda contracts with the chief of police, so there is not a comparable position in that. But I can tell you that the Arinda chief of police is typically a lieutenant in the sheriff's department, and they probably make more than our chief of police position right now. The next position that I'm recommending to you for some adjustment is the community development director. You can see the current monthly salary there, the proposed increase, what that would do, and then 3% COLA would bring it up to $10,609 a month. The Moraga planning director makes approximately $3,000 more a month currently, right now. And the Arinda director of planning, actually, it was kind of, kind of nice to see that we are starting to inch closer to what another city is competing for in the pool of professionals that we could attract. And again, I've noted that the position with the asterisk is that it's subject to a 3%. So I'm recommending this particular job classification receive a 5% adjustment. So just so that you, that we all understand, what happens is if you were accept, to accept this, the salary range gets adjusted from the lowest level to the highest level. We have a new salary schedule, and then it's incumbent upon the city manager where those individuals are placed in that salary schedule. The finance manager position is the next one I took a look at. And this one has a greater movement than the other three. I have found that with our fortunes of having Kevin on board and whatnot, that there has been an elevation of the organizational value that we have been recipients of from his professionalism and his expertise and his CPA. To the point that I find, as I take, I took a step back and looked at us organizationally, I think it's of equivalent value to the community development director. Different job disciplines, different roles in the entity and organization. However, very clearly, this position has escalated within the importance of the organization. Therefore, my proposal, I looked at it, and I just thought, we ought to bring the finance manager up to the same organizational value level as the community development director. Below the chief of police, you guys, we all know, next to the city manager, the chief of police is the second highest paid. However, that's not actually true. There are some cities that the chief of police is the highest paid, even above the chief administrative officer or city manager. But nevertheless, in the context of the strategies, the strata of organizational value, my recommendation is we move the finance manager job classification salary range up approximately 19%. So there's the current monthly salary, the proposed increase would bring that up to $10,300, then the COLA there would therefore come in at $10,609 a month. But you can see now, even with Moraga, the lower two, even with that demonstrative increase, we're still going to be finding ourselves below what Moraga is paying for their director of administrative services, although that director is handling personnel as well, or HR functions. But we start to get a little closer with Arinda, and that actually might be one of our benchmarks because Arinda does not have CalPERS plan. And there are candidates that are looking for CalPERS, they have a 401K plan. So there are candidates out there that will self-select. So as we get ourselves closer to Arinda, we'll find that we might attract additional individuals. And this is not the fact that any of these individuals are leaving tomorrow. I will be extremely upset if they do, or they are. But it's, I can tell you that as your manager, I worry about that daily. I never know in any given moment in time that when I walk into City Hall, I will have a letter on my desk, or one of these individual, or any individual will walk in and say, sorry, chief, but, you know, I found another job elsewhere. My hope here is to improve their satisfaction with the city, to elongate their tenure with us. And then finally, the assistant to the city manager position is not a line position, it's a staff position. But in evaluating that, I found that there were some adjustments that needed to be made as well, considering the plethora of special projects, expertise that is necessary out of that position regarding stormwater and recycling, special projects, community involvement, and other types of things. So you can see the current salary range, I'm proposing this go up 5%. Comparison to the next smallest cities in the county, Moraga has an assistant to the town manager. That individual, you know, in their structure, also functions as their city clerk. And then I didn't find an assistant to the city manager in Arinda, but oftentimes, that similar position is termed to be a management analyst or a senior management analyst doing that kind of work for the city manager. And you could see even in that organization, by the adjustments herein, we are still beyond, behind in the prevailing market rate. behind in the prevailing market rate. So my recommendation to you and proposal is we make those adjustments in the interest of not only wanting, desiring to retain, but also if and when the day comes that those individuals would be moving on, that we make ourselves more competitive in the market. Now, if you actually get into taking a look at those four positions, incumbents in those four positions, three of them, I can say that now, three of them will be female, three out of the four, because, you know, the assistant to the city manager is female, the community development director is female, and our next chief of police will be female as well. So just a side tidbit in terms of what we are attracting. Once again, I think we all know that this is a great place to live and a great place to work. I've heard that said, and I've said it as well, and sometimes people will add on to it the tagline, yes, but if you can afford to work there. And so I'm trying within this to, to make some adjustments. What does, is the financial impact, if you go along with this, the impact for the remainder of the year for all this is $10,302. And what is the impact for a full year, the following year is $29,000 approximately. So an 18-month proposal is $39,000. Some of the time, particularly in the assistance to the city manager, can be offloaded to other enterprise or revenue funds. The community development director also has the opportunity to charge to developer deposits as well. So in the final analysis, that the general fund would not have an impact fully of that $39,000, but I think that's a good budgeting number that we should be aware of. The resolution has been prepared for your approval, and I'm available to answer your questions.
Well, thank you, Gary, for that very thorough explanation for the proposal. Any questions, counsel?
The only, I have one. If you're recommending the adjustment, for example, in the case of the finance manager, should there be a title change as well, finance director, to be comparable in that way, to be recognized as, as what you're trying to accomplish?
A fair enough question. My initial response is no. I think actually finance director, in my mind, means that there's a larger organization or entity that falls underneath there. I think it gets to kind of, what do we wish to project? For instance, Danville is a city, but they like to be called a town. All right? So finance director or whatever. I would stick with the current title to that position, but I appreciate that thought.
Question? Julie?
Not a question, comment. At the Transportation Authority, we go through periodic salary surveys, and they are outrageously expensive. And even in an organization there, we have 20 employees, so it's similar size. We don't have law enforcement, so that makes it a little bit different. But even there, compared to other agencies, we are very, very small, and it is very difficult to get job classifications that match. You can get a finance director in any one of them, but they don't all do the same thing. And some of them have, you know, multiple assistants, and we only have one. So I think the idea of foregoing the salary survey is wise. I think it would be illuminating, it would be shocking, it would be dismaying, and we wouldn't wind up any different than exactly what you have proposed. Your level of expertise, your experience with this, you know what we have to deal with. I, I think these are excellent recommendations. I'm very glad to see them come forward. I think they will help us be a little more competitive for a little while longer. I am concerned that some of our bright young talent will decide that there are greener pastures, and we really don't want them to leave, so we need to find new money somewhere that we can come up with this. So it would be, it would be helpful if there was a way we could afford to pay our personnel what they should be paid. But this is a good step in the right direction, and I applaud it 100%.
So I, I think, so when we talked about this in the committee, I think the one question I asked you was, Mr. Napper, was, when is the last time we had actually looked at the salary ranges, other than the annual cost of living adjustment? When we, had we actually looked at the salary ranges and looked at adjusting them? And I don't think you had an answer to that, because I don't think you were able to recall when that might have happened. So I don't think we've done it in a while, I think.
Oh, yeah, and, and that's really the answer. I've been here since 2001, it's never been done. And let me just, since you, you talked about it as well, let me tell you my thoughts to a salary comparison survey as it relates to Clayton. Because I have done those in other cities that I've managed. Number one, Councilmember Pierce has it correct, it's extremely expensive. Number two, the winners go yay, the losers try to chew it apart and say, it's, you're not comparing apples and apples. When I say the winners, I don't mean the implementation side of it. I mean, there, you know, people will go and look at, where do I fall? Oh, I love this study because I make a movement upwards, as opposed to, let's say, freezing a position until they come up to the prevailing rate. However, I always caution my city council members that if you engage a salary comparison survey, you better be prepared to buy the outcome at the end. Why? You could say no, but then what happens is by engaging that process, you, we have created an expectation, a hope and a promise that greater things are coming down the road. And I can tell you, the morale of the organization, and I've seen it happen in others, is, gosh, that was a great survey, we can't afford it, so we put it aside, and we are actually at a worse morale state than if we had embarked on it. As it relates to Clayton, I don't think it's going to prove anything different than we already know, that we are at the bottom of the pay scale when it comes to all job classifications within the city. The other thing, and if I just, while you have me on this, the other thing, I have some philosophical difficulties with the salary, comprehensive salary comparison, is the fact I think it creates a king's X on labor negotiations and collective bargaining. Because here we have, over a series of years, we have done collective bargaining in good faith. It may be less than a CPI, a little more than a CPI, but then, when we do a salary comparison, it's kind of like, oh, well, we negotiated in good faith, but we now, we want, you know, king's X to all that, we want to be increased, or whatever the case may be. So, you know, I try, in some cases, particularly when I know the outcome is going to be more than we can probably afford, I, I kind of, well, no, I don't, I don't encourage the use of it.
My, my overall comment just was, I mean, I, I think overall the fiscal impact is relatively insignificant, and I'm certainly, I think it's a great recommendation, I'm fully supportive of it, and I hope it is received as a message of appreciation towards some of those key positions that we have in our city that really make our city run. And yet, we're still at the bottom of the, in comparison. I do appreciate the comparison to some of the nearby cities, but I'm fully supportive, certainly.
Dave, you comments?
No, I think Gary has always done a great job of balancing what a small city needs, and as long as I've been on and truly been on, and we've had the discussions with him over the years, we've always, you know, been desperate to do something and fearing. So I, I think this is an excellent idea, and I agree with all the comments that have been made.
Okay.
May I just add one final comment to ratify what you've said? I served as the managing director and had, at a Fortune 500 company, and which also had human resources, and I can tell you, one, you're absolutely correct. A serve, outside survey is extremely costly, and it sets expectation levels that may not be matched within the organization. So I concur with that. And you did a survey, you did it.
A simple one, yes.
All right, thank you. Well, I think you heard, everyone's in agreement that this is something that we need to do to remain anywhere close to competitive, or at least make it a little more attractive, to attract and retain our excellent staff that we need to operate as we do. And I know you have these concerns that you've just shared with us, well, the council shares those concerns, because an excellent staff, as we've been able to acquire, makes our job easier. We can rely on, on the advice and the work being done by this staff. And so this is a way for us to show that appreciation and acknowledgement of the level of, of expertise we currently have and would hope to retain. So we'd like to, I think.
Would you like a motion?
Go along with the recommendation? And we will also open this up before we. Before we put it up for a motion, I'll take some public input.
Thank you, Mark Ventura, Tara Court. I, I understand, you know, trying to attract, retain employees and attract new employees if you need to, and congratulations, Kevin's. Just a couple of observation questions. You know, you mentioned the way you structure the raises, and you have, you know, three, three females in the, in the raised position. Oddly enough, it's a male who gets the higher pay raise, so you might be, want to be careful when you word that. Question is, when, when did you do a, when was the last time you did a special pay increase other than the cost of living adjustment?
This is public comment period, is it Q and A?
Okay, and I'll just, I'll just close with my other, other question.
Staff respond when you're done.
And the other, the other observation question is, $39,000 for 18 months, does this factor in the CalPERS liability, unfulfilled liability? What, $39,000 for 18 months, that's just salaries and, and, does it, is it salaries and benefits, or does it also factor in whatever else we need to put in, in CalPERS?
Thank you.
The answer to your first question is, you know, we have not done special pay adjustments in that respect, although the city council has over the years made adjustments in my salary as they've gone through performance evaluation. Secondly, the $39,000 for 18 months does include benefits that are prorated or, you know, impacted by salary rate increases, so the answer is yes, it does include the CalPERS rates and those CalPERS rates that we know for next fiscal year.
Just one other comment. Your question about the last time something like this was done or raises, I think it just raises the significance of the need for us to, to look at that now. It is overdue, and I think it's, the timing is appropriate. Julie?
I think we have adjusted the ranges in the past, though, when, particularly when we've had changes in personnel. We have redefined a couple of the jobs by time and, and responsibility. So we've done some tweaks around the edges, more than anything.
Well, there've been some adjustments to the job classifications.
Right.
That is correct, and then, you know, particularly at, let's say, some of the administrative clerk levels or whatnot. But in terms of any, you know, actual, you know, movements within the salary ranges, it, it has not been done since, you know, I've been here since 2001.
Okay. I think the comments have been made, then, so I'll entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the resolution approving various percentage adjustments to and establishing new salary ranges for four management job classifications in the city as defined in the staff report.
Second. Moved in second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No one? All right.
Thank you.
Certainly, and thanks again, Gary. Next item, then, would be to review and approve the mayoral, my determinations for the city council ad hoc committee intra-governmental and regional board assignments for 2018. Some of these new assignments are based on the changing roles of mayor and vice mayor. That does flow to change some of our assignments. And when I began to look at that, it appeared as though a good time to look at other assignments as well. Some of us have been in some of these assignments for more than a couple of years, and I think it's good for the council members to take on new assignments. I think it's, provides input also to those committees, to get new input from new members on those committees. So with that in mind, I did make a number of recommendations that were attached in the packet, and would hope that you would agree that those would be worthwhile for us to go ahead and approve.
And I want to concur with your recommendation on the assignments, and having been in that chair for a time, it is a challenge to make sure that the, that the work is spread out amongst all of the members, and they gain from it and the city gains from it. So I, I concur and support it.
Have no issue with it?
Looks good.
All right. I think it does require, though, a motion.
No.
Well, we will be moving to a motion. Any comments from the, no comments at this time? So it does require a motion, then, to approve as, as proposed?
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and then, that we approve the proposed city council member assignments for the calendar year 2018 as proposed. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? All right. Moving on to the next item, then, city council discussion to determine the date, time, and location for a city council's annual goals and objectives setting session with the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Hayden, members of the council. This is the time of the year after the reorganization of the city council for us to meet together as a city council and city manager to go over the goals that have been assigned over the years and those in the past year, to look at the relevancy of those in this coming year, and also to assign new ones. And so the item before you is to pick a date on which that meeting, annual meeting, might take place. As you know, we typically hold that in city hall, in the upstairs conference room. It is a public meeting, so the public could attend if they so desired, and it's a good chance to go over where we're at and where are we headed. The hazard of not doing so is we don't know where we're headed, and we'll never get there. So if you could, you know, give us some thoughts on what day you pick that works for all of you, and then the outcome of that would be to do that by motion, setting that special meeting.
Okay. Well, Gary did include previous dates that we have selected, and you'll see it's all late January, early February, so it's earlier in the year.
Can I make a suggestion? What about the fifth Tuesday of this month, on the 30th? Is that already booked by everybody, or is that available?
I'm good.
I'm open.
I have to have our two people that have to come from a distance, so.
I think I'm okay.
I think, I think I'm only good on, like, starting by six. I have a meeting the last until 4:30, I think.
I would have subjected, suggested the next, before the next council meeting, but I'll be coming from San Jose at a meeting that doesn't get over until four. I'm going to be lucky to make it by seven o'clock anyway. But it occurs to me that that fifth Tuesday is usually open, and we love to keep it that way, I know, but perhaps.
Yeah, am I hearing a little later meeting, more?
Well, yeah, two, you can't get here much before six, and so maybe even 6:30. I don't know whether that messes up anybody else's calendar, but just a suggestion, or Monday night at 29.
I'm fine with Tuesday. Tuesday, the 30th? He was fine with Tuesday, he was.
Yeah.
He was yawned.
Yeah, I was worried. I'm fine.
I was trying to confuse you, Jim.
So I'm hearing Tuesday, the 30th, at 6:30. Would that work for you? Gary?
Yeah, I was planning to make that a date night, but, no, that's fine.
I'm going to leave that alone, Gary. Just because I like you.
No, no comment, yes. All right, then, let's go ahead and set that goal-setting meeting for Tuesday, January 30th, at 6:30 at city hall.
I was in a form of motion, mayor?
So move.
Second.
Second. Moved in second, and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You need council items? You need council members to like brought up? The council members have brought up future meetings?
I have one, and if you would pass it. I received this from Travis Credit Union. As you know, annually, they have a shredding day, and for some reason, he wants this year, Eric Maldonado would like to have some sort of a MOU between the cities for consideration. I don't know how we want to handle it. So I just submit it based upon his request.
But we let staff come back or decide how to handle this. I don't know that we need it as a council item.
Right, okay.
Gary, would you take a look at this? Decide whether or not it's something the council should handle?
I think Gary can execute this if it's appropriate.
Yeah, let us vet it at the department head level, but I don't know that it rises to the need to have the city council--
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be a council item.
Just rated as a 1 to 3 haramph, and let's move on.
Well, I tell you, they do a great service.
You've got that, I'm telling you. I really loaded up this last year, and it was very well-received.
Yeah, yeah, some of them, you know, I'm just looking at, encourage local law enforcement to be present to answer questions. I don't know what--
I just give, I'm just, I'm the messenger.
Okay, we'll work with Eric.
Right. Can we shoot it?
Other than that, I'm not hearing any--
Keith, can I, I have one, and maybe it's more of a question. So now we're doing the INLEU study for affordable housing, which is great. So I'm wondering, so, you know, there's a significant housing package that got passed in Sacramento at the end of last year. One of the items that became effective a couple of weeks ago is the Palmer Fix, AB1505, I think, which allows rental projects also to be required to have BMR units. So I'm wondering if we are planning on maybe making that amendment to our inclusionary housing ordinance anytime soon.
I'm aware of it. We haven't talked about it at staff, but we can bring that up.
And I don't think it's urgent, because I don't think we need it right now, but I think somewhere--
A cleanup.
--it'd be good to include that, so that rental projects are also subject to inclusionary housing requirements.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And looking at the next item, closed session, we don't have one, so we will adjourn, then, the city council meeting for January 16th. And our next meeting, then, is scheduled for February 6th.
Don't forget you adjourned.
Well, we do have the goal-setting meeting now on January 30th, and I would like to adjourn the meeting in honor of Val Alexe, our previous city manager, in honor of his passing away. And then we move into the Clayton successor and successor housing agency meeting. I'll call that meeting to order, show that all city council members are present. First item, then, would be a consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Public comment? No one in the audience? No public hearings? No action items? Any board items anyone wants to bring up? Hearing none. We will adjourn that meeting, and I was trying to break your record, Dave, of quick meetings. And we will meet as needed for this particular item in the future, all right? Well, thank you. We are adjourned.
Good night.